Jeff, an opportunity to welcome you also.
Yeah.
Give me open your lines.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for being here today. We, this is the second one that we've done with our county commission partners and our city council. I'm looking forward to it, and I'm, hopefully, this will continue on into the future. Hopefully, on a better weather day than this. But we can get together and talk about issues that are concerning to both organizations and other organizations that we partner with throughout the community. So, thank you for being here.
When it's raining sideways and the rain's actually coming through the doors, it must be a nasty day, Alex. Okay, so, welcome back to Western Washington. So, the first topic that we were going to talk about is our jail discussion. So, there's been a lot of discussion regarding how do we house prisoners? How many prisoners can we house within our facility? Which is very dependent on a number of items. The most, right, pressing right now is our staffing in our jail. So, it's hard to attract corrections workers. I think Chief Hanson is seven down.
Seven to eight, yeah.
Seven or eight, seven or eight employees down right now. And so, that definitely impacts the total amount of inmates that we can have. And so, trying to prioritize which inmates that we keep within our facility is definitely something that we are concerned about. It also impacts our law enforcement side of things in the sense that law enforcement has difficulty when they want to arrest somebody and detain them, they have to have a place to detain them. So, we've talked about this a number of times, and I think the solution that the city's looking at is what other alternatives do we have? So, what I'd like to start it off with, and Chief Hanson, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of give an overview of our jail right now. What is our, what is the total amount of population that we can handle? And what are the priority prisoners that we're looking at bringing in?
Okay, so, our jails, if we have full staff, we're supposed to have twenty-seven, there's twenty-seven funded corrections deputy positions and to manage a jail population of about eighty. The, right now, we have eighteen, I think today, we have eighteen of those twenty-seven positions funded. Actually, it's twenty-five positions because we converted to, but, so, we have eighteen out of twenty-five. With the reduced staff population, obviously, we need, we had to reduce the population of the jail, the inmate population of the jail, so that we can still manage it safely. The, the population, the target population right now is at sixty. And, and we're running anywhere between fifty-two and sixty at any one day. The city has, of those sixty beds, the city has seven, and we contract with the city for those seven beds. And there are restrictions on who gets to come to jail to try to manage that population at the, at the numbers that it's at. So, right now, the, the jail is restricted to class A and B felonies, people that are arrested for those crimes in mandatory arrests, like DUIs and assault, assault, EVs, adomestic violence, looting, and those crimes. So, all the other crimes that don't fit one of those bills, they don't get to come to jail. They are often, most often referred to the courts, and they just, and they bypass jail until a judge orders them to jail.
So, Jeff, would you like to kind of address the city's concerns and what they're looking at for potential solutions?
Yeah, so, some of our concerns, and please Chief Beeson can correct me when I say something wrong, but, concerns are inability to get people into the Mason County Jail. We do have contracted seven beds, but often, what happens is if inmate is being held on both city and county charges, until the warrant is confirmed, that's what my understanding in the community calls the golden ticket, and until the warrant is confirmed, that inmate on city charges can't get booked into jail. So, it's important for us to have the ability, and I know it's important for the sheriff's department to have the ability, to hold people accountable. One of the items we're looking at to address that accountability piece is contracting with the Nisqually facility in, what is that? Just outside of DC? For jail services up to twenty beds per month that we pay on a per day basis. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. We're just finalizing that contract now. It will be coming before the city council for their consideration on November fifteenth and December sixth. And then, at that point, we'll begin using that facility, utilizing that facility, figuring out a way to transport our inmates to that facility we need. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. The city council is considering the 2023 budget at the moment. And in that 2023 budget, the city council has at least preliminarily authorized the use of reserve funding, so that the city can hold people accountable when officers feel the need to put that person in jail. So, that's what, that's what we're looking at at the moment. And moving forward, unfortunately, because we're using reserve funds, we're only going to be able to maintain that program for 2023. And we need the ability to hold people, obviously, accountable past 2023. So, looking at solutions for that end, and I'm glad everybody's here to talk about finding solutions.
Sheriff, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I think considering on Tuesday that you're going to have a new sheriff, I'd leave that to undersheriff Adams because I'm on the short time. The only, the only thing I would add to this entire thing is I really think that the idea of having this meeting like this today, what you're doing here, is really good, whoever decided to start doing this. And I think it's probably one of the most productive things we've seen in quite some time. So, thank you for doing that. If Travis has something he wants to add from our new sheriff's perspective, or what he's thinking.
Yeah, the only thing I'd probably add is that we've had discussions from the sheriff's office with our board of county commissioners about also doing some outsourcing. And we're, we're waiting for the city to do all the heavy lifting on finishing up the contract so that we can just use their work and not have to redo it. And then, we'll be coming back to our commission to talk about something similar. I think we're in the same boat. We're, long-term, outsourcing is probably not the best, best option, best use of funds. But in the short term, for the crisis we have, we're hoping to do a similar type of outsourcing. One, so that we can fully utilize the sixty-bed capacity that we have right now with the number of people we have. We can, we can rest right up to the line and hold accountability while still having that relief valve of having Nisqually for some other arrests and move people back and forth. But at the end of the day, I think we're all going to have to come together and talk about what the long-term plan is because being able to resolve the increased need for more beds and a better facility in Mason County is something that we're going to have to tackle. It's never going to get cheaper. I mean, we've had conversations for all of the years that I've been here, and it's a long time now, about how expensive it is, and we can't do it right now. And strangely, it hasn't got a dime cheaper every single year that we've been talking about it. So, I'm glad that we're here, glad that we're talking about it, and look forward to moving forward with some sort of resolution.
So, to give you a high-level overview of what the county's done over the years, it predates myself, but I have read back on a lot of the studies that have been done. A number of different solutions were looked at. So, they looked at how do we partner? Can we partner with a neighboring county? Worked with Grace Harbor originally to say, hey, can we come together? We both have aging infrastructure. We both need a newer facility. Can we work together on this stuff? I believe that Grace Harbor ultimately dropped off that, so it came back down to just the Mason County. And the estimates that I have and the estimates that I continue to get emailed about are anywhere from thirty-five million to ninety million. But those are estimates that were done back in 2021. So, back in 2021, interest rates were quite a bit lower than they are today. So, those numbers would be very different, I think, if we had a different budget today. The proposal, one of the proposals that we've seen, I think it's the most recent proposal, was a public-private partnership. So, basically, how that works in general is that you have private funds that come in and actually build the jail. And then, we would lease the jail from that private entity for a period of time, let's say thirty years. And at the end of that thirty-year period, you then, you're basically leasing it home. So, at the end of that thirty-year period, there may be a cost of having to purchase what is raining. But it is, I've seen it done in other governmental entities, and it's, it's an expensive, it's an expensive alternative to move forward. Those are some of the challenges that we have. And the funding for it, so. We've talked a little bit with our lobbyists, the county hires, to help work with our state legislature on possible funding solutions for our issues that we have. The Association of Counties got together, and a lot of the smaller counties said jails are a big issue. Corrections are a big issue. Remove support. Whether, and what does that support look like? It's most likely funding. The problem with that is, is that the larger counties said, we're not interested. And so, just with the small counties, I believe that Deborah told us that it was over two billion dollars in requests, which they accumulated within about a two-week period for when they asked the counties to say, if you received help from the state, what would that help look like? Two billion dollars. So, so just from our internal perspective, I don't see a lot of solutions coming from the state level with assistance in that funding. Talk, actually, we're currently going through union negotiations with our corrections. And I can tell you that it's a, it's a difficult process right now. We, at Mason County, are facing some of the same challenges that all of our neighboring counties are. Whether it's a law enforcement or corrections career, we're having difficulty finding people that want to get into that. Mason County currently has a ten thousand dollar hiring bonus for individuals that would be paid over a three-year period. And I think that we've attracted one or two that are actually interested in that. So, I'm not sure that continuing to throw money at the problem is something that is a solution, but that's definitely things that we're looking at, so. Any other comments from city council members or commissioners? Any questions?
Just see if Jeff can explain how we utilize Forks as well.
Yeah, so, the Forks facility, when someone is sentenced from the municipal court for a long, long term, I don't know what the, what the bright line is, but I would imagine something like six months or more. The facility in Forks makes a round robin, brings a van down and picks people up from here, from the Thurston County region, even as far as Chehalis, and will take them back up to Forks. The rate on that is fifty-five dollars a day. But it's a six-hour round trip, so you can imagine that that doesn't happen very often. But it is a solution for us for longer, longer terms.
And the county, county, myself, I've reached out to Forks also to inquire about the possibility of doing some housing up there. And that's exactly what they told me, it's fifty-five bucks a day. They have, right, as of yesterday, they had twenty beds available, so there is space. They do have the staffing right now. And they also said that they could do a once-a-week run, you know, a transport run back and forth between Forks and down here. So, there is, there is a possibility there for us to.
Mark, even if you got fifty million dollars to build, build a jail, I mean, how are we going to solve the staffing issues? I mean, it might be irrelevant. I hear Thurston County has tons of beds, but it's only half-full because they don't have the staff there either.
That's an issue statewide.
Yeah.
Well, nationwide, honestly.
And I don't know, Nisqually, Nisqually says that they have staff, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know why they have staff. I think that it has to do with the different set of rules that's associated with it. I know they don't have to go to the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission to the state academy. And I don't know if their retirement systems are more attractive, or, I don't know the specifics of that, but somehow, they've got people.
Could be just tribal members.
Yeah, it could be too, yeah.
It could also be location, they're closer to Olympia, they have more people.
And to total. So, and they do pay a little bit more, but they don't have, they don't have left the benefits that we do either, so.
So, as the county is kind of discussing the jail, if you're still receiving estimates and those types of things, building a new one, has there been any discussion about potential revenue sources associated with building a new jail, other than the state?
The revenue source that we tend to go to is real estate, the first quarter percent of real estate access tax. So, that's our main funding source for the majority of our capital facilities. We have diverted some of our road levy money to the general fund to cover traffic, trafficking. So, it's basically freeing up general fund dollars that could be used elsewhere within the general fund realm. But, but that's something that is challenged too. So, as we look forward and we look at the impact on our roads and the ability for us to actually do the amount of work that needs to be done to, to maintain our roads, that doesn't even include, you know, the improvements that we, that, that, there's an impact associated with that.
So, there's also a property tax levy that is in RCW that would be, I think, in five or six-year increments that we looked at a few years ago that would generate, I think, like twenty-five million dollars over the life of that levy. A few years ago, we also put on the ballot the additional, the three tenths of one percent public safety sales tax, and that, that was voted down sixty to forty in the community. So, we have looked at those revenue options before. I would say from my perspective, you know, there's, there's got to be more conversation on that with the community, and there has to be some more buy-in. And I think, you know, that's, that's one of the areas where we've struggled. And I think one of the things that comes back to us is what's the plan for that, you know? So, I think we need to have a little bit more internal discussion about what it is we want to do at a facility. We don't want to build a facility that we can't staff, you know? So, we have to kind of take a short, medium, and long-term approach to solving this issue. Short, obviously, being a potential partnership with Nisqually or Forks or some other outsourcing plan in the, in the short term. And then, you know, really diving into that staffing issue that's critical countywide, statewide, rather, here. You know, and I can, I can tell you that, you know, we've been at this for a few years now, you know, on the, on the commission, and everybody's frustrated. You know, the city's frustrated, the county's frustrated, law enforcement's frustrated, our constituents are frustrated. The only people who aren't frustrated by this are the criminals. So, you know, it's really incumbent upon us to kind of get our act together and figure out what it is we're willing to ask our constituents to contribute to this. You know, the, the funding that we got in the nineteen-eighties to build a facility that we have was part of the Sentencing Reform Act, and, you know, the legislature was really helpful with that. But the priority seems to be in Olympia to move away from an incarceration model. And, you know, we've done a great job in this community of coming up with alternative sentencing programs, therapeutic programs, electric home monitoring, and you name it. We've been, I think, a leader statewide in implementing those kinds of programs. But, you know, there remains, you know, that lack of accountability for folks who aren't, you know, right for those types of programs. And we need to be able to, to hold them accountable and have them, you know, pay their debts to society. And that's a, you know, that's a, that's a conversation about justice for victims as well. And so, you know, we need to be, we need to be having these conversations, not just with each other, but with the community, and start to recognize, you know, and understand what they would be willing to contribute to a project like this long-term.
Any other questions or comments about this issue?
I've got just a couple. So, one, on the staffing issue, I would say that being in this profession for the better part of three decades now, I can tell you that staffing is cyclical. We go through periods where we don't have a lot of people applying, and then we go through periods where we've, we've got plenty of people coming through on the list. I, I think right now, with lots and lots of open jobs on the market, and we're competing with a lot of private sector and other things, you know, we're probably in a low period now, and I'm, I'm not as concerned about staffing in the long, long run. The other, the other point I would probably make about building a new facility is we did a, we did a pretty good job in our research, I think, of what the county needed for the next twenty, twenty-five years when we, when we did our original project. But I don't think that we did a whole lot of research on what the options were for actually building and constructing the facility moving forward. And I think that there's a lot of options out there that we did not, did not explore and haven't explored yet. I know that there are facilities that can be built in a modular fashion, where the footprint for a large facility is there. The infrastructure for that large facility is built as far as kitchens and laundry and all those things. But a smaller holding area is built with the idea that you can expand that at ten years or at twenty years as that need grows. So, I think that there's a lot of construction options out there that we haven't really spent a significant amount of time reviewing. And then, the other thing that I would point out is, yeah, we've, we've talked about what we need to do with the community and getting them involved. I, I would say that if we're going to look at what our options are for financing, building, and all of those things, we've got some amazing people in Mason County with some amazing backgrounds from everything, from finance to architecture to all kinds of things. And I've had numerous people in the community with some pretty impressive backgrounds say, hey, if you put a committee together, we will find some amazing people to be on that committee and do the type of research and, and looking into options that you may not have the time or the bandwidth or the expertise to do. And so, I think if we got some serious conversations going about looking into our options for types of construction and financing and all those things, that we've, we've got an untapped resource that if we utilize them, one, we'll get buy-in, and, two, we'll probably get an amazing product out on the other side.
And I know I've mentioned this before, but we're just about to start construction on the C Street landfill cleanup. That, well, should start soon, but the, the contract will be approved on November fifteenth, and then, the, that construction project will happen for several months of 2023. But that is, I believe, a, about fifteen-acre site, four of which will need to be contained, it's part of that, that piece. But we would, we would be more than happy to partner with the county to give you that piece of property, accepting the contaminated area, and partner with you on infrastructure needs to build the facility on that site. So, no, I've said that before, but I just want to say it again, so everybody is, everybody knows. And the other thing is, Commissioner Shu, you mentioned the public safety tax that, that wasn't accepted by the community in 2019. But if we could show that that revenue, or if the county could show that that revenue would go toward holding people accountable, and we have this pilot program with, it's not really a pilot program, but the outsourcing program that we have for the next year, we show we have the ability to do that, is that something, you know, just kind of throwing ideas out there, that we can have a solution to this in the next five years or so? Is that construction is going to take a while?
Sheriff?
I was kind of about to add what both you guys have said that, I'm not only predicting, but I think that you're starting to see public settlement across the state of Washington change. People went for this idea that's out there now against what most people in law enforcement were recommending. Things have gone horribly wrong in so many places that communities all over the state are coming to chiefs and sheriffs associations saying, what do we need to do to get this back? I think there was a group of legislatures that supported us in this thing, and there were some that weren't. And now, that's turning towards them, the public's starting to say, we, we're tired of watching this mayhem go on, and we want to see it go back. And I'm hoping that in the next few years, that will be a, a good driver that will support more people to come forward for this. I'm hearing it in our community, you know, about those. The other thing that I would hope would happen, I, I'm, I'm looking, and I only think Commissioner Netherman maybe. I'm not sure, there might be somebody else, but I think we're almost exactly the same age. But I go back to a newspaper article that I've handed Chief Hanson numerous times. I hope that this group, or the formation the group considers, when that jail was built, the citizens were sold that that was going to be the never-ending jail, that we would have all this capacity and space. If you look at that article that came out, the day the jail opened, the comment was made, I believe it was by one of our judges, that the day that the jail opened, it was overfull. And people were told that it was going to be this thing, and it truly wasn't what it was told to be. We were in high school then and discussed that as high school students in civics class. And, and we're told that we're the ever-expanding jail. And it, it truly has not been. And there are a number of us that remember that in the community, that maybe we were sold something we weren't, it wasn't told to us correctly. And so, I hope as we move forward to this, the consideration will be made that when the jail is built, that yes, we've got to build for the capacity, and we've got to build for what we have financially, but you, you have to look down the road. It has to be just more than enough to fill it for today because tomorrow's needs are going to exceed it. I, I don't know, I'm, I won't even be around by the time the second one, but if it's not, it's not done fairly and honestly to the public, there are still many, many people in this community that remember that being told to them. And they were very, very back, you know, walking back on supporting a new jail because is it going to be what it's said it's going to be? And as we move forward, that, you have to build forward. And I know it's expensive, but there are a lot of people that remember that. And they were apprehensive, is the word I want, to support something new. And I think now, I think that's going to change, and I think we can do a better job of reaching the people with that.
Yeah, if I can piggyback on what Sheriff Salisbury is saying, as we, as the city's been looking at outsourcing to Nisqually, I've met with the sheriff's department multiple times because I don't want anything that we're looking at to come out of the blue and blindside them. Ultimately, we would like to have a partnership with the county as far as holding folks accountable. I have a radio on my desk, and I listen all day, and I hear my officers go out and contact folks that literally have a deck of cards worth of warrants that aren't bookable. I get calls from people in the community all the time that want to know why these low-level offenders aren't being held accountable. I hear from the courts telling me that people aren't showing up for their court dates because they know they're just going to get a warrant that nobody can book them into jail for. So, our outsourcing is a way to try to help us hold these folks accountable now, that, you know, the community will see that we're making things safer for them. And folks will get the message that we're not going to tolerate that type of behavior in our city anymore. But ideally, you know, all of us working together is going to be far more productive than us working separately. So, my hope is, is that, you know, we're going to, we've done the heavy lifting. Hopefully, I'm going to hear about that contract later on today. And we'd be able to have a partnership where each agency has the ability to book people that need to go and work together in order to get them transported out to wherever we do outsourcing. For us, it's going to be in Nisqually so that we can get people out there sooner rather than later. But at the end of the day, anything that we're doing, that we're working together, is probably going to be far more effective and efficient than us working separately.
A, a number of years ago, Mark, I weren't here for that, and the commissioners could comment on the dollar value, but we did at one time, we're in a position that we outsourced. And it became extraordinarily expensive to do that. However, during that time, when we could book people into jail, it was the first time in thirty years that the crime rate had actually come down. Because people realized that if I get stopped right now, I'm, I'm being held, I'm not going anywhere. And word got out very, very quickly that when the arrests were made, you were going to jail. And, and that, those years, during that time period, the crime rate started to come down at a very significant noticeable rate in the community. But at the same time, that outsourcing was so expensive for the county that, you know, it put us in a hole, quite honestly. But we know that if we can react and, and to that issue, like the chief has said, that, that we can keep that, that crime rate can turn around. And it did almost immediately, but the cost, again, were a factor in that.
I think we all agree that, that the issue is how do we hold people accountable and where do we hold them accountable at? So, being able to, being able to, to follow through with some of those penalties associated with actions that people take is something that we all are, are finding solutions for. So, I appreciate the city working with our sheriff's department. I know that the sheriff's department is concerned, has similar concerns that the city has. Here's similar things from our constituents. So, finding a solution for that is definitely where I want to focus on. So, how do we, how do we focus in the future of finding alternatives that work for the both of us? Because it's going to improve our community.
Mark, can I just ask one question for Chief Hanson?
Absolutely.
So, Chief, what percentage of your population, your inmates right now are pre-trial versus sentenced?
About two-thirds.
So, two-thirds are away from trial?
Yep. And that's changed, it's, that really hasn't changed a whole lot over the years. What has changed a lot is the, is the, the classification of the inmates we have incarcerated. Because for whatever reason, since COVID, they, more people are required in individual rooms. And when that happens, it takes up more space because there's two beds in every room. that happens, it takes up more space, because there's two beds in every room. And if a person's required an individual room, then basically one person's taking up two beds. So that's, it kind of, it's tough.
And some of those COVID restrictions have been, have been ruled.
Yeah, they've all been pretty much set us up now.
So looking forward, do you think that's going to impact the ability to book more people in there?
Well, right now, we don't have a physical space problem, because remember, we've got 93 beds in the jail, our operational capacity's 80, but we only have enough staff to keep 60 people in there. So it's not really a physical space problem right now. It's 90, 95% a staffing problem. So that's really what, wish I had the golden ticket to figure out how to hire staff.
Yeah, I heard on the news that unemployment was still paying around 3%, which is a 40-year low.
And then, and then one thing, I also say one more thing about the jail population. So the low classification of crimes that end up in jail, those are the people that, you know, do our laundry, they do our litter crew, they, you know, they're the, they're some of our work, we restarted the work with this program, they're on home monitoring, they're, you know, they're really not, they're really not suckers of resource. Those minimum security, long-term people that Forks wants us to send to them are the people that are useful to us, you know, the inmates. And so that's kind of problematic in itself. And then the, if we were to take a snapshot of the jail population now versus what it was seven years ago, before we had to implement the booking restrictions, the population, the risk of the inmates in jail is much higher than what it was back then, because we were taking those low-level crimes, and those people are spending pre-trial time in jail. And now, since the booking restrictions and COVID and everything else, and staffing crisis, the only people that come to jail are the high-risk people. You know, they're the people who are arrested on Class A and B felonies, and the domestic violence offenders, and the DUIs that can't be released, you know. So we've ended up with a jail full of higher-risk inmates that require more attention from us than what we did several years ago. So it's weird how it changes, you know, especially the legislature, you know, when the legislature changes the rules, for instance, drug arrests, you know, that's impacted our population. It's lowered it dramatically. And that's just not us. I mean, that's statewide. I mean, you can go talk to any jail in the state, and you'll see that the populations are like half of what they normally are. And it's because of the rules that, you know, have come forth out of the legislature in the last, and COVID, COVID had a lot to do with it too. But it's, so the trend, you know, the trend right now is, don't incarcerate, you know, put them in programs, get them help, get them fixed. And, you know, and that's, it's cyclical, and that's just how it happens over the years, you know. And it'll, like the sheriff said, it'll reverse, you know, and people will get tired of being victimized. And then the public and the legislature will decide that, no more, you know, we're going to make drugs illegal again, you know. So that's just my take after seeing this for 30 years.
Carefully point out that not all legislators.
Yeah, you know, I recognize the staffing challenges, and I've heard the word cyclical a bunch of times, which is interesting to hear. So, you know, from the council's perspective, at least my perspective on the council, we worked really hard five, six years ago to establish, because we were in difficult financial times, we still are, by the way, you know, we worked really hard to establish some strong fiscal policy, and fairly conservative fiscal policy, I'll say. And in one of those areas, we worked to establish a 20% strategic fund balance in our general fund. Next year, we're going to eat into that fund balance to fund jail services. And unfortunately, what I'm hearing today isn't necessarily encouraging, because we're just on the brink of having discussion, right? So we're going to go through a year, and we're going to turn it off, and we're going to be right back where we're at today, possibly even in worse condition than we are today. So, and the people of our community are going to be extremely frustrated with that. And I'm not looking forward to having to kind of go down that path. So I'm very interested in accelerating this. And I also kind of just want to read, you know, from our budget book, page 51, talking about targeted fund balances, basically saying adequate fund balances are maintained to allow the city to continue providing services to the community in case of unexpected emergencies, unfunded mandates, and/or economic downturns. So I'm not convinced today that our investment in jail services in Nisqually or in Forks are the result of, you know, an unexpected emergency, unfunded mandate, or an economic downturn necessarily. So that said, I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic that, you know, these steps we're going to implement will take us forward. But I'm very much looking forward to tomorrow, starting the conversation on what we do.
Joe, I think you're correct there on the cyclical thing. And I'm not sure how this gets this way, but in my last 50 years here, living here, on this issue, over the last 40, at least, on the jail issue, it's just the way the world works, I guess. But we seem to always fall into the wrong cycle of things occurring in our community. And I say this even from our last one, you've heard me talk to you about this at meetings, is that each time we go out for a jail, we have somebody else's bond or levy issue going. Oh, we don't want to disturb that, so we don't want to go with the jail. And then a little while later, we kind of get in this cycle that then somebody else runs one, then it's schools, then it's fire, whatever. We never hit that jump-in spot. It seems the right time, because we always seem to follow the last levy or bond that was passed. And when you pass for a new school in one area, people are, oh my gosh, can't afford this, I don't want to do it again. We keep kind of following those things. And I don't know how you get out of that cycle, but it's been very cyclical for us in this, and it's very challenging for the community to vote yes, 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 all the time. And I go back to what I was saying a few minutes ago, I'm reading a thing by another retired sheriff this month, that the communities are, they're getting where they've had it across the state of Washington. And many of those communities, as you saw that video a while put out by the mayors of the greater Seattle area, saying, listen, we're done with this, we've got to go back out and support these things, they're changing as well, because they're realizing it's just hammering these communities. And I particularly, in the next few years, hope that this gets resolved, because as a regular citizen in the community, I hope that if I call, that there's been a police officer, sheriff's deputy show up, and that the individual that is doing these things that are not okay do get taken away and something done with them, because otherwise, we're going to look like many communities that are surrounding us that aren't doing so well, if we don't solve this issue.
I wanted to make a point that we have capacity, but we don't have a staffing, that's what I'm hearing. And why don't we do something about staffing that's not law enforcement related? Why can't we have more affordable housing and put it in the contracts of our labor contracts? Why can't we have below-market-rate housing for our officers and emergency providers? Why can't we have better schools that more people be attracted to come out to Shelton and live in Shelton and work in Shelton? I think if we want to break the cycle, we don't react to the cycle that's going on, but we create a whole new paradigm of creating a location where people want to live and work, and that we staff it among ourselves and get out of all the different supply chains and work within our own community, within our community. That's my goal and vision, and I think that we should stop being reactive, start being really proactive about making life better in Shelton and Mason County, and that we will, you know, take pride in working. And everyone here takes the small county discount to work here, you know, already, right? So why don't we do more soft things, soft measures, that not necessarily from the general fund, but can we create like a housing situation, a below-market-rate housing for this community, where people want to, oh, well, I want to go work, forget the $10,000, that's going to go away, but I'm going to have a nice apartment or a nice house to live in when I get off work, my hard job, you know. So whether it be education or emergency services. So I think if we want to really get out of the cycle, we should start doing different things instead of being reactive. But I also want to point out that we don't have everyone here at the table. The last time I asked, that we have representation from the tribes here, and I don't know if they're even invited. So I think this is a whole community thing, and we should make the whole environment different, instead of just reacting to what's a problem that's in front of us. We should think about the whole skull escape. So that's my point of view. Thank you for listening.
I was going to ask, what do you think your, what volume of your population in the jail is suffering with mental illness?
Uh...
I know you're not a psychiatrist, and...
I would say, I would say at least 60%.
Yeah. So we had better mental health support in the community, that might actually mitigate some of your population, or are you talking about people that are past mental health issues and have become so violent that they can't be managed?
Yeah, there's lots of programs, and there's lots of help available for both people that are not in jail and people that are in jail. The legislature throws money, I mean, they make money available for peer counselors, for reentry programs, for mental health counselors. I mean, there's lots of things available. And it's not like we don't have the people that come into the jail to try to help people, set them on the right path when they get out, because we do. We have, we have, we have services. And there are services in our community. And, but what I see is that, is that they're like, they're grant-funded, right? So, so like, telecare is a great example of what was a really good thing here, and then it went away, because the funding went away. And so when the funding goes away, the programs go away, the service goes away, and then, and then somebody else has to pick up on it, or maybe they don't pick up on it. So it's, I don't know, it's, to me, if somebody could figure out how to coordinate all the help into one, pour it into one funnel, and then have the, have the water come out of the bottom of the funnel, so it's concentrated, and not everybody's trying to take a little bit of this money, a little bit of that money, and then run with their program. And that person runs with their program, they're kind of doing the same things, but they're really not doing the same things. And it's just, it's haphazard in my mind. And so I think it's, I think if somehow we could figure out a better way to coordinate all those things together and have a concentrated focus, I think that could make a difference. But the people that are coming to jail, these are the, they're the high-crime people. They're the people who are committing felonies. You got to remember, our booking restrictions prohibit those low-level crimes from coming into jail.
Right.
And, and so, you know, we see the really bad ones that end up at Western State Hospital. They, you know, they're wiping stuff on the walls, and they're, I mean, they're just, they're absolutely, they're just, they're really, really bad. And so, how do you help those people? I don't, you know, I mean, we try, but at the end of the day, they're the same people that keep coming in, and coming in, and coming in, and coming in.
It's never been law enforcement's job to, well, it's by default, it's become law enforcement's job to deal with mental illness. But the real issue of mental illness is not being dealt with on a state level, because eastern and western state hospitals are complete disasters.
Yep.
And nobody, nobody, I have family members that have worked in both of them, and it's just a nightmare.
Hundred percent.
The state has to fix that.
Yep.
Before they can do anything else.
Yep.
Western state, they have a...
Do you want to end your conversation? I need to move on to our next agenda topic. I think that is obviously one that could, we could dedicate a ton of discussion, we could dedicate the entire two hours.
Mark, I understand you want to move on, but can we get a commitment that we're going to, we're going to take this on here in pretty rapid fashion from the group, at least from the elected bodies? I think this is a priority of the council, but like, commission on board with moving this forward?
Can I jump on with Joe? I just want to say that, you know, for those, I share his concern. For those of us who are planners, 2023 is basically gone in my mind already, right?
Yep.
I mean, it's a gone year already. So if we're talking about a short term of funding for outsourcing, you know, I don't want to have another government meeting to plan our next meeting. So, you know, I would like to say, it would be a good idea if we could get some commitment to move forward with some sort of committee to pick up the baton where our last, our last research from KMB dropped off. And I don't, I don't care what that looks like. I mean, I would recommend maybe an RFD, if you will, you know, a request for volunteers from our community. We could put something together and find a good group of folks that could do, do the research on the KMB, have some conversations with staff, pick up where we left off, and start doing some solid research moving forward, rather than waiting for the next meeting to talk about what we're going to do again.
I love the idea.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So I will say, I'm totally willing to start that process going and get some paperwork and some, we've got a great, great social media outlet that we could get some, something written up to start generating some interest in the community. I'm sure that the sheriff, you know, he knows like 65 of the 66,000 people in this county. I'm sure we could find somebody that would work real well on there. So if this group is committed to wanting to do that, I am more than willing to get that ball rolling and get it rolling.
So I can follow up with our commissioners at the county on that at our next briefing? So we can talk about that, maybe another commissioner discussion, because I don't have time to get it on the agenda. But that was something that we could talk about, if you're interested in that topic.
Hey.
Jeff?
Yep.
All right. So moving on to the next topic, talking about some properties that the county staff have been sale for, been a year?
Probably not a year. Almost a year.
So we have six parcels that are basically adjacent to our new public works facility. And they run right along 101, and they end where 102 kind of been out, so they didn't import roads. The county declared those properties surplus. We went out and got the market value of what the properties were, and they've been actively marketed by Richard Beckman and his group, potential buyers. We've had some interest, we've had some individuals put down earnest money, that we're trying to get financing to do some of their projects. I think that the common thing that I've heard is that individuals want to put some type of a motel or an RV parking lot, and I think a lot of that is to support the raceway here, people that come and visit here. But none of those actually came through. So they didn't actually get the funding to do their work, and they ran out of time to get those things done. We have received a few other offers that are pretty considerably below market value. So we really can't accept those offers, because obviously, it doesn't work that way in the government. So we are evaluating whether we continue to keep those properties online. And maybe we want to look at, are there other alternatives that the county could utilize that space for some margins? So I'm going to turn it over to my commissioners, maybe if you guys have anything that you'd like to say about those parcels?
And for me, I'd like to, I'd like to see that they go commercial. I think it benefits the county and the city and our residents. If we could put some heads in bed, I would love that. I know LTAC community would love that. So if we, I would love to see it stay on the market for that purpose.
I agree.
Sure.
So three years ago, the city, these VR lobbyists, one of the things we had been hearing for years was about the economic stagnation along this corridor, due to the Lake Comer's agreement that was in place by the state of Washington. The VSR lobbyists, we worked with Representative Griffey McEwen and Senator Sheldon to ultimately get that wiped clean. And we've been just chomping at the bit to see economic development in this area. I absolutely would agree with Commissioner Trask, you know, I would love to see that property be marketed, and I'd love to work together to market that. A for-sale sign, in my opinion, isn't necessarily marketing. So if there's things that we'd like to do in terms of coming up with sub-area plans, or, you know, other, other things that may even require an investment from the city, I would be supportive of that. Yeah, using it for governmental purposes, or, you know, I think that would be counter to what our initiatives were with removing the Lake Comer's agreement, or sitting on the property and land banking. I don't think that would be a good move for economic development in this area. So I would love to, I'd love to talk more about this collaboratively. And I'd also like to kind of know more about some of the, some of the offers that you have had, and why those have fallen through exactly. I know there's funding aspects of it, but again, what do we be doing between the city and the county to make that friendly for development for commercial purposes? Because quite frankly, we could, we could definitely utilize that additional revenue to fund things like jail services and other things like that, that aren't going to just be additional taxes and burdens to our existing population in Mason County.
The most recent offer that we've seen has not happened, but the... The most recent offer that we've seen has not happened, but what the property is.
Is it, is it possible to dedicate some of the land as a park, like maybe in the middle, and sell the other parcels to bring the, the value down, so you can sell it? We just did that. Or we are, or have you all thought about that?
So Devin Mayor Schmidt mentioned a subarea plan, and if we put together a subarea plan, not just for those parcels, but also, you know, the wider general area within the UGA, that shows prospective investors that there is, there's an identity that we want to see. And I know Jay Hill, our committed economic development director, has done several subarea plans, and so have I. So that's something I'm familiar with, and I would be happy to partner with the county if that's something that you're interested in.
I, I was talking about our deal with, over on North Cliff area.
Yeah, so there's some open space requirements for each, but take a look at what that is, if it's a commercial area, and whether open space would be appropriate there, you know, and a commercial development, those types of things. But we get into those details as part of the subarea planning effort, and then present that to the county commission and the city council, you know, we can definitely do something like that moving forward in the future. And it ought not to take too long.
I was actually talking about the, the hospital property that we're negotiating, yeah.
Yeah, and there's currently a trailer, but there's also a, a subarea planning effort. We're gonna talk about comprehensive plans here in a minute, all those things are redupped.
So again, we have, we have a number of major capital projects and parks that we're looking at right now. So we don't know that we have a lot of capacity for creating new parks, just in my personal opinion. But that's, that's, we do have a number of them that have some pretty big dollar value that we'd like to, we've kind of worked on it for a long time, we'd like to see some of those improvements here, and so that's our focus.
Yeah, no, I just, I just meant to just keep it for that use, and then they buy on either side, or, you know, it's a little spot to bring the value down, so you can sell the property.
So just some history on it, just so you know, it's been more than just a sign on it. It's been marketed by realtors, but it's also been marketed through the EDC, and it's been on the market since four of nineteen.
Oh, wow.
And that property is, although it is owned by the county, it's not owned by the general fund, it's owned by the road department. And so any, for us to take it and turn it into a park, we'd have to purchase it at the, the fair market value. We don't just have the ability just to just switch it over and say, okay, we're not going to build on it. The cost would be, you know, probably millions, just to have that. And we just don't have that ability just to turn it off and do that. So I just wanted to share that with you, but it has been marketed. There's been, I've seen quite a few that have been interested. And when we first put it up as a commission, we put it up because there was supposedly interest for it. Even back then, I tried to explain, if there was interest for it, they would put in offers on it, it doesn't even have to be on the market. These people that actually build hotels, they know how to do this, and we keep trying to fit a square peg into a round hole as these people do it, and they try to, to make this grand offer for it, but then at the same time, they don't actually have the money for it. So they go out, they're trying to get their investors, and we hold it off the market for them, so they can do it, and we just keep walking into that. If, if it was the, the proper place to put the hotel, it would already be there. Now, it doesn't mean you don't keep pushing and keep trying to find that right person, because the demographics are huge. You have, aside from all the, the need that you have for a short-term motel hotel, you also have this place right here, which is huge, but you also have the correction center, which have people come visit, which is huge. And you also have the training for the state patrol. So the numbers are all there, but they have not found its way to be perfect for the investor. Now, another problem is, is you have an issue with the economy at different times. And you're not going to just give them something for free, because it's still going to cost them, you know, twenty million to build it. And the property is not the biggest issue that, that's stopping it. So it'd be nice if we could just do the I Dream of Jimmy thing and make it happen, it just doesn't happen that way. But it has been marketed very heavily, and we've, we've taken a lot of different offers on it. They're just usually not the right ones in order to actually build it. And I want to say, you can't just pick and choose, when you're the county or the cities, you know, somebody comes and makes an offer and say, no, I don't like you. You, I, you're not what I want. We can't do that. We have to accept that it's on, it's on the market as a fair market offer, arms-length transaction. And you can't pick or choose. We'd get sued immediately for that.
I've successfully, in a couple of communities worked for, have been able to do joint development agreements, public-private partnerships, to, when, when the city or the county identified a particular property and wanted a use on it, to actually find a way to put it together, to go out and attract people to make that happen, through long-term land leases, through tax incentives, things like that. There's a lot of tools that, you know, with like a comprehensive plan, it could start with a subarea plan, it could start with, you know, a comprehensive plan, something like that, or it could come from a site plan and a development agreement and finding someone. We had a meeting yesterday with opportunity zone developers, who are looking at this area because of the federal tax credits that come along with it. So there are people out there who could probably take advantage of it if we put the right package together for them. And so that's something that, you know, I think the, the city and the county could work together towards, to making sure it has all of the right infrastructure components and all that. And we could, we could get the use that, you know, we want to see there, which I think ostensibly is, is, you know, more tourist-oriented, commercial. So I'd be happy to help bring that experience to, to any kind of a future discussion of that.
And we did rezonate to be able to do that, just, you know, we didn't just sit on it, because it was literally government zoned.
Yeah, I'll add to that. I think, you know, I'm a little numb to remember, you know, when we were told, you surplus it, they'll come, they'll build on it. If you rezonate, they'll come, they'll build on it. And so, you know, I'm a little bit maybe somewhere probably between Commissioner Nellin and Commissioner Trask on this. I mean, I'm certainly open to a conversation around a subarea plan. We've talked about that in the UGA, you know, and maybe, wouldn't be a, maybe a plan to action EIS like we did in Belfair, but some other planning, you know, you know, venture to, to, you know, evaluate what we can do and what we can't do. But, you know, I would just, I would just candidly ask, you know, down the road, there's hundreds of bakers that are owned by a developer, and have been for decade, you know, a long time, several, several years, over a decade. And, and they have yet to turn dirt in a way that has produced anything from a, from a commercial development perspective. And so, you know, I would just say, you know, candidly, why do we think if we go a half a mile or a mile up the road, that that's going to be any different? The challenges exist there, you know, and I think that's, that's a, that's a signal to us that, you know, perhaps the, the market isn't right yet for some of that development, and there's more work that we need to do on our side, perhaps to, to go through that process. But, you know, certainly open to a conversation about a subarea plan. But, you know, we do have a lot of layering space needs at the county as well. And I know the council has been, you know, resistant or uncomfortable with some of our other real estate acquisitions downtown, and certainly have heard those issues raised to us. And, you know, so I, I just, I, I want to know from the council perhaps, you know, where are you comfortable with us investing in our facilities for our workforce that provide services countywide? You know, if we're not going to do it at one oh one and one oh two, where are we comfortable having those conversations for expansion around our downtown campus? So I, I think there's a lot more to it than just trying to attract economic development, which, God bless it, we're all proponents of it. We wouldn't have surplus that property if we didn't want to see development and growth and opportunity come to Mason County and Sheldon. But we have to be realistic about our growing needs in the county for our workforce, whether it's a jail, or general government services, or anything along those lines. You know, talk to Dave and Kel about their building. Talk to our coroner, who we're going to probably move for like the fifth or sixth time, you know, to, to find more space, you know. So it's just, those are the kinds of things that we have to evaluate it against. We're not just able to kind of look at it through rose-colored glasses and think that if we make a couple of planning adjustments, that we'll get, you know, a big economic development project, but certainly open to those conversations.
Well, we still have C Street, we could do a land swap.
I'd be wide open to discussing downtown county campus. There was just a little blip there.
Could you just have an idea?
My small nuclear reactor just went off, so. No, I'd be, Kevin, I'd be more than happy to have a conversation around what, what your presence downtown looks like. I mean, I'll just say this, number one form of revenue to the city's general fund is sales tax. And when retail space gets eaten up by government space, that's an impact to our budget. So, you know, full disclosure on that. So if we can work with that, let's do it. You know, I don't, I don't think there's a, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity, but, you know, again, when we see Main Street retail space get eaten up, that, that hurts, that stings. But again, at the same time, I don't, I haven't seen anybody buying up retail downtown and bringing in anything new. So it's been a little bit difficult and slow at the moment, too. So, you know, I understand that, and totally can empathize with the challenges of space and aging facilities. We're in the same boat as well. But, yeah, I'm ready for the conversation.
At least, you know, from my perspective, and when we've had these conversations, because I mean, we're always chasing square feet, right? I mean, that's, that's the biggest surprise that I've had in this job, is how much time we spend thinking about where I'm going to put everybody. But, you know, I think being able to keep our workforce downtown, and being able to have them, you know, hopefully patronize, you know, businesses and restaurants, you know, during the lunch hour or after work, you know, is, is really important. And there have been few entities that can make the types of investments that we have. If you look at, at our building, at our district court expansion, you know, it, it, and you look across the street at the Bank of America building, that has been vacant for quite some time now, and, and some of the challenges associated with what that property looks like now as compared to the, the project that we did across the street from it. You know, we're sometimes looked at as, you know, taking away revenue from, from the city, which I totally respect and understand. But at the same time, we're also a revitalization partner, in the sense that we're able to do those capital investments that the private sector might not be able to, depending on, you know, the economic ebbs and flows. But at the same time, we're also really interested in making sure that our employees have, you know, access to all the amenities that the city provides from an economic perspective as well.
Absolutely want your staff walking around downtown on their lunch breaks and everything else. You know, that's a great thing, and creates that buzz that we need in the downtown districts. But we can do that in a thoughtful way. I think we've got the combined experience to do that. It's just, we just need to start having that discussion.
Absolutely, yeah. Super interested in continuing that.
Let's do it.
And again, that, that can be part of the conference.
Which is a perfect segue, right? Kel, do you want to, do you want to kick this off?
Yes, the stars have aligned, the stars have aligned for Mason County and the city of Sheldon. So next year, the, both the city and the county are going to be getting state funding to update our comprehensive plans. So the I five corridor started, I think, last year, and they have their comp plan updates underway. And next June, I, I understand, we'll be getting monies. We do have to apply for the funds, but they're non-competitive, so we'll be getting monies to update. And I say the stars have aligned because Jay Hill, who just started in September?
Yes.
At the city, and I just officially became the community development director for the county in October. We met and discovered we're both foodies and big Lebowski fans. So we have already been planning for our comp plan update next year, over lunches downtown. And we seize a real opportunity. One nice thing about Mason County is we have one incorporated city. So of course, the county is still planning, subarea planning for Allen and Belfair, but we don't have a, you know, a, a city jurisdiction that we're working with. We just work with ourselves. So it, it's nice, because Pierce County, King County, you know, there's dozens of cities that they have to coordinate with, and it gets very complicated. And I would not be the right person for that job. So I'm glad that I'm here, and I just have one city jurisdiction that, that we have to coordinate and do our countywide planning policies. In looking back, I don't know that that's ever been done very well, but we finally now have all the right people, and it seemed, like across the board. I mean, I'm, I'm amazed at all the county departments compared to when I was here in two thousand and five. And today, I mean, and that we have a county administrator and the city administrator, and so it's, it's really, we've really grown up a lot in the last two decades. And so Jay and I talked about, let's combine our funds. We're going to have to go out for outside service, consulting services. Jay wants to do a lot of stuff in-house. I have an amazing long-range planner in-house that could do a lot of work. And so Jay and I have committed to spending in, time internally until January on figuring out what, like, what does the county needs are for consulting services? What are the city's needs for consulting services? Drafting a scope of work together, and going out for one consultant team and their subs based on our needs. And then we have a coordinated process, we're reminded to work with each other. The jail discussion this morning is an excellent example of why, you know, comprehensive planning is important, why coordinating with your local jurisdictions are important. And it just makes us more competitive in the future for all those fundings where it says, you know, if you want to go after monies for this fund, where is it in your comprehensive plan? Is it just a new idea you came up with, because it seems like the issue of the day? Or is this something that your community has been planning for, for a long time, and here it is, and this is how, you know, we've outlined? So I'll stop there and let Jay.
Thanks. So as we've been talking, we, we realized, I mean, there's, there's the city of Sheldon's needs for a comprehensive plan, there's the county's needs for a comprehensive plan, and where they kind of overlap is some amount of Venn diagram. You know, we're not necessarily talking about a, a complete joint plan where it's one integrated document, but more, more kind of like a, like a good overlap, because with the UGA and with the countywide planning policies, there's a lot that needs to go into that. There's a lot of data acquisition that it makes a lot more sense to hire one consultant to come out and do it for the whole county instead of individual consultants to do portions of it, or to worse, do the exact same data collection for the county, but different consultants. So that's where our, our audits of our, our internal audits of our comp plans will be useful by January, because then we can really define the scope of work, what we need. And then by the time we have the money assigned by June of next year, hopefully we'll have already issued an RFP for the services that we need. And as opposed to, and, and, you know, how, how you guys choose to administer and whatnot is going to be different than how we do it, maybe. I personally really like, kind of like, taking the lead on it and really dedicating myself to, you know, running the plan more as, you know, like, the general contractor of building a house, controlling all the subs, as opposed to hiring a general contractor to, to do that. I like to be the GC for it, so. But, you know, if we organize this in the right way, we're, we're just going to find a lot of efficiency and save a lot of money, and produce a superior product, and one that's easily integratable. So I'm really excited, and it's been great meeting and working with Kel so far, and I look forward to continuing that for the next two and a half years of this comp plan process, so.
So what, what weight, you know, it sounds, so comprehensive planning sounds self-explanatory, right? But this is a little bit different than what we've been accustomed to in the past with potentially, you know, stronger partnership. I appreciate kind of how Kel opened that up. And, you know, between Kel and Jay, Jeff, Mark, you know, what, what are the advantages that we're looking at here with, with this effort? And what is, what is comprehensive planning really going to mean to Sheldon and Mason County moving forward? Is it, is it, because in the past, it just kind of seems like it's that plan that we, at time to time, reference, right? To, to fill in the blank on a grant application or something like that. But I mean, what, what are we really embarking on here, and what, what support are you going to need from, from us?
So I, I'll just start that conversation off real quick. I think in a lot of communities, not just Mason County or the city of Sheldon, you complete the comprehensive plan once every eight years or ten years now, as the legislation has changed. And then you put it on a shelf, and it gathers dust. And that's, like I said, not just true for us, it's true for everybody. What I think offers the opportunity of the collaborative effort between the county and the city is that it doesn't just gather dust, it's a blueprint for how our communities are going to grow in the future. With both jurisdictions participating in that, everybody's pulling in the same direction, which is incredibly important for grant opportunities, for asks from our state legislative partners, for other types of things that will produce the, not only the economic development results, but also the better quality of life for residents of Mason County and the city of Sheldon. But that's really what it is. It's a map of how we're going to get there. It's a map that covers everything from water and sewer to roads, to where the houses are going to be, where the businesses are going to be. It goes into every little detail, and if we do that together, I think it's, it would be a benefit to the community as a whole.
And so yesterday, Jay was on a pre-application conference that the county held for a development proposal, kind of the beginning proposal for a mixed-use, mixed-use of apartments and commercial space in the Sheldon Urban Growth Area. And there's some ideas on how we can get this development to occur, but currently, the Mason County Sheldon Urban Growth Area development regulations wouldn't allow it. Our density is too low, no one would ever be able to pencil out a project in, in our UGA based, because our, it, it just doesn't pencil out when a developer has to bring sewer and water and all that infrastructure that doesn't currently exist. You have to have higher densities for it to pay, and that's what we're, you know, it was dreadfully obvious yesterday that how kind of unprepared the county is to attract that development. that development. So, uh, Joe, to your point, I think this collaborative effort, it can, are, not only the comprehensive plan, but then after you get that updated, you work on your development regulations to make sure your development regu- regulations are implementing what you, what the policy and that vision you've set. And so then when that development comes in that you want to see, it's like, yep, this zoning allows you to do that, as opposed to right now, it's like, we're, we're outdated, we're 20 years old on those development regulations and it's, and it shows.
Sounds great, this is good stuff. And Joe, if I can add, I think the biggest thing that would help with developing a comprehensive plan from, from the city, county, or joint perspective is going to be vision because in my experience, um, the, the vision of the document always comes out some shade of beige, you know, where we want a healthy, safe, prosperous community. Well, what does that mean? What do you want the community to look like? How do you want it to grow and evolve? Well, you know, it, it, by the time everybody's ideas all come into the hopper and get shaken out, like, and, and nobody wants to offend anybody and nobody really understands what the process is or can do, and it just, it all comes out some shade of unexciting beige, and then it sits on a shelf for eight, 10, 20 years and doesn't, you know, stir the hearts of men, to use an old planning quote, like, and I think it's really important that we, we do something visionary and transformative, um, and if people are going to say, well, that's, you know, how, how do we do that in Shelton? Well, that's, that's up for us to, to figure out, we've got a lot of smart people working for us, we've got a lot of smart people, uh, as our electeds. I, I think it's time that we, you know, take a moonshot and try to really, like, help this community become the community that it wants to be. Um, and, and so I, to, to summarize my request, excitement, I want excitement. If, if you guys can provide one thing besides money, um, it is excitement. And, and the vision is that, you know, to, to help Corral and Shepherd and, and grow this community vision of what we could be. I mean, I, I've had a lot of conversations with people since I first started working here, and one of the most telling conversations I had was with a very longtime family landowner here who owns a lot of property, and his comment was, I've always found it weird that we're a waterfront community without any waterfront access. And like, that is like, mind-blowing, you know? And so like, that's the kind of, like, aha moment for me, that I was like, man, there's a lot we can do with this and...
There are no beaches in Shelton and there's no burgers at Bob's. That's my new bumper sticker.
So, so just, uh, you know, to, to kind of take my, my perspective for what it's worth, I, I think there's a lot that we can, we can do in this vision, and if, if we miss the vision, you know, at least we tried, uh, at least it was some exciting other color instead of beige. Um, and so, um, that's, that's where I hope we go, um, jointly, you know, is, is, is trying to really be transformative. I seriously appreciate you saying that. I still very vividly remember sitting in this exact room about a year ago, uh, doing our strategic planning retreat with the EDC, and one of the number one things that came up in our little breakout discussions is what the hell do we want? We don't know what we want, we haven't gotten to an agreement between the county, the city, the port, the tribe, right, all these organizations that are going to craft our future. You know, it's not that we're disagreeing, we're just not having the vision discussion.
But individually, we're not having that. As a council, we don't have a vision of what we look like, so how do, how do we represent...
How are we going to get anything done?
And it's super important now because think about, think about this, this, the westward march, the march west from, you know, the east coast, and here it is, right? And it wasn't until, you know, I grew up on the I five corridor in Edmonds, and I remember what Alderwood Mall before, you know, there was no Alderwood Mall, so, you know, I remember, like, all that growth. So now I'm over here on this side of the Puget Sound and it's like, oh my God, they've found us. Now it's, can you, so whether we want the growth or not, it's going to happen, and so I think we really need to figure out what our vision is. And, uh, I love downtown, uh, Railroad, you know, from the Wild Irish to, you know, we've, we've been hitting all these spots, but, but it's time, like, I feel like our time is now.
For lunch.
I'm, uh, I'm so excited for this because I'm going to send a text to former undersheriff Barrett who in two thousand and seven suggested this, and begged and begged and begged and begged for a strategic plan between the county and the city. And something that, that Joe brought about and you brought about is when these strategic plans are just set, and you, somebody used the word to shepherd. Um, Jim's idea, when we set the strategic plan, that when other entities or programs come in and say, oh, we want to do this now, no, this is our plan, this is what we're going to do. We're not going to jump over here like we've been doing and go over here for a while, and oh, we've got this idea over there. A strategic plan allows you, as he would say as a good Marine, to have focus on what you're doing and stay focused on that. I would very much agree with you and very much agree with undersheriff Barrett in two thousand and seven, that we continue to have these, this is a really good idea, and we go over here and this is a really good idea, and we, we haven't focused those ideas as you talked about, it, it'd be music to his ears, but I, I think that's an outstanding idea or way to move forward so that when someone else comes in and wants to do something strange on the outside, say, we've set this and we get these things done, we'll look at those, we'll put them at the bottom of the list later, but it allows you to prioritize where you're going because if you don't have an idea, like somebody said down here, of where you're going, nor are you going to get there. So I think it's a great idea.
Hey, uh, Mark?
We have it.
I just want to apologize to the group, uh, the sheriff and I have a time certain meeting with the FBI coming up, so we actually have to get out of here.
It's not about you, Commissioner.
Too bad, I wish I could be here for the DCR conversation, uh, yes please, more DCRs, so.
I believe we have the gem in Shelton, we have a, we have the citizens, that's our biggest group of people that tell us what they want, and they have great ideas, if we can tap into more of the citizens, what they want in Shelton and the community and Mason County, it's priceless, priceless.
So Joe, one of the things that we're not touching on though is, uh, even though we may not like it this way, this was, comprehensive plan scheme was created in the sense to keep sideboards on by entities that we may not agree with, or maybe some people do agree with. And it is meant to make sure that you don't go outside, that if you do, uh, it gives them the ability to sue and to hold you to that, to that scheme, or not be able to build. It's not always there to open up to build, there's a lot of restrictions to say, we can't do this and we can't do that, and all those must be in the comprehensive plan. Then it's put on the shelf so that they can take it off and beat us over the head with it. Well, that's the reality of it, and so when, when it's put together and put together, you know, gray or, or tan or whatever, it's quite often done in a way to protect us from being able to be attacked. Uh, it would be nice to be able to expand however we think is possible, but there's a limit on how many homes you can have on an acre. For us as the county especially, we have a lot more because your, your city is an urban growth area and you have a lot more leeway where each place has something different that has restrictions put on it for the purpose of keeping it contained, whether we want it that way or not.
I think that there's a, there's a lot of coordination of, uh, the, the plan for how do we, how do we get infrastructure to these areas so that we can have developers that come up with these ideas that fit within the zoning side of it, but maybe it's something that we never thought about, right? Individuals that come and look at our area, uh, if they, if they have a clear definition of what our plan is and, and the area that is able to be developed, to use the property that's out here along 101 as an example. If I built this, then my expectation is that, that based on the plan that the city and the county have together, here's the additional developments that's in there after that. So I think the more, a hundred percent understand and, and agree with Mr. and everyone's concerns about being, uh, too specific and then having people come back and, like, hold you to something to do, but I think that there's ways to, to set that up, and, and my focus is on, what are those government infrastructure services? How do we coordinate and work with each other on those things? And I think there's a lot of benefit there to not only our communities and providing them with clean water and a way to, to, to process their sewage, um, but I think that they have good roads, good infrastructure there, um, law enforcement, and all those things, they're all pieces. Housing, it's all, it's all included within that, so coordinating those efforts together to me, it, it is, uh, it makes sense because we get this, uh, we get this economy scale, right? So I often, when I, when I worked at Thurston County, uh, the geographical information systems department was part of, of my department, and, uh, we would go out for an aerial view of the county. And so we'd pay an individual to come take LiDAR photos of our county. City of Volokhia contracted with that same person, pay that for it, City of Tumwater paid for it. Well, the guy did it once, he sold that same product six different times. So, I mean, I, I think that there's, there's ways of, how do we get together and recognize those things where we can say, hey, let's collect this data, let's have this data available, and then it's, then we only pay for it once. So we're, we're both, both entities that benefit.
But there's a beauty to stretching everything you put in there, and, you know, I'm one of those, I enjoy watching us bring it to the, the greatest limit we can so we can do those developments and stuff, but it takes a lot of work because if you do it a little bit wrong, they will use it against you. As a, as a county commissioner, when I first got elected, everybody used to get mad, why is the sewer only in Belfair? Why are we not going down the South Shore and the North Shore? And they just thought that's ridiculous, and they explained to him, because the law says you don't bring urban services to a rural area. Well, that doesn't make sense, that's where it is, that's the way it is. That's not us, that's laws that were passed before he was ever in office, before any of that, that's just the things we have to fight and stretch. Uh, our staff is good with being open-minded and trying to find loopholes and ways for us to get there, but there's always somebody waiting behind the wings to come down on us for it. Water is a big thing at our county, we have to constantly be very careful of what we put into our comprehensive plan so it can't be used against us to stop development.
Joe, want to talk a little bit about your annexation plan?
Yeah, so just a real quick overview, so very broadly, anything that's within our UGA, uh, the city is able to annex, anything that's outside, we're not. So that's, it's kind of a bright line, we can't, uh, can't go outside the UGA. But at the moment, uh, we have one annexation underway, it is, I believe, expanded to three ninety-five, three hundred and ninety-five acres, uh, on the east side of Olympic College, kind of running up toward the north. And we've been working with the, uh, the prospective developer on that annexation, it's expected to produce roughly twelve hundred new homes over a ten-year period. Um, we're not going to get all twelve hundred right away. Uh, that, uh, that would be one huge construction project, but that's, uh, what we're looking at, uh, at, in that area, the council has already approved the 10% petition resolution, and we expect the 60% petition ordinance to come back in, uh, come back to council's review in probably February, uh, perhaps March of next year. And at that point, it'll be annexed and we'll work with, uh, work with the county auditor and everybody to certify that, and then the development process can begin. But, uh, like I said, that, that will take several years before you'll see a rooftop come out of the ground on that, on that site, and then probably a 10-year build-out. As far as, uh, other areas in the UGA, we are, uh, looking at various areas, but there are no concrete plans yet, um, and we're talking with various partners in the community about what that might look like for them and, uh, how we, uh, how we can help make that happen if that's something they're interested in doing.
I think, I think that's exciting.
What do you think, I mean, I, so the way I look at it is that this is the area that's, that's currently just got logged, um, most likely it was a forced lands prior to it, now it's turning into a city.
That's not the area though.
So, so it's, uh, the area that just got logged, it is Olympic.
That's a lot of trouble.
Yeah, so this is behind that.
Right, yeah. Oh, it's behind there? Oh, thank you.
Right behind my house.
So, you know, we're any, we're evaluating other opportunities in the UGA if the people that own the property are interested in doing that. It's not, will never be a forced process, it can't be, uh, except in very specific circumstances, which none of those are, occur here now that I'm aware of. Um, the one island we have, but that's not something that we're looking at immediately either.
And the only other case would be if they have consented, they've sought out city services, water, sewer, further out in the UGA, they had to sign a, a no protest agreement that if there is an annexation, they can't fight that essentially. But we haven't, you know, to my knowledge, created a plan to, like, to start scooping these up or anything like that, so.
Not, not, not at the moment.
Do you know what Olympic College is, sorry?
You're fine.
Do you know what Olympic College is, is planning to do with the properties that they just logged?
From my understanding, a lot of that is for portables for Cedar High School, uh, in, in, uh, cooperation with the Shelton School District, uh, and some of it, if I remember right, uh, in this time was, um, for safety reasons, uh, didn't want trees coming down on Toddler's Port, on a day like this.
Oh, I can tell you, I walked out there and had trees fall down as I was walking on the sidewalk, but, yeah.
Turn around and go, yeah.
Right, I wonder where all that water's going to go.
In Mason County.
So, uh, that's kind of where we're at now, so.
Uh, similar to Commissioner Trask, yeah, I'm, I'm giddy, right? It's development, right, and it's interesting, rooftops especially, you know, it's beneficial, can be beneficial to the school districts, can be beneficial to the city. Um, at the same time, I'm not going to lie, I am kind of concerned, it's a lot of development in a constant, you know, it's a lot of development, it's, it's new. Um, I'm not confident that the way our impact fees and general facilities charges are structured today, um, that financially the city's going to be, you know, in a, in a solid position at the build-out of that, so we're going to learn a lot, uh, through this process, and I am encouraged through our conversations on partnerships and other things like that, that you're going to learn a lot too, these, to be the city on, on this as well. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see what those impacts ultimately look like, uh, it'll be kind of the first evolution that I'll have experience on, um, in, on the council hopefully, uh, to see really now when we talk about impact fees and, and those types of, uh, charges and things like that that we, we, uh, attribute to growth and development, it'll be interesting to see how that kind of pans out. I know you, your Belfair development, um, another thing that we're watching closely to see how that kind of pans out for the long term, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, while development is good, it kind of needs to be well-planned and thoughtful, and, um, you know, like I said, I'm hopeful that this is all going to be great, but, yeah, also somewhat concerned that we're not, you know, giving up, you know, a ton and then putting a lot of that impact on the backs of the existing residents and businesses in our community, so be fun to see how this all goes, but, yeah, looking forward to successful outcome.
And then the other partners that are involved, like the PUDs and Comcast or whoever, yeah, Fire.
Yeah, Fire.
Jeff, what about sewer expansion?
So sewer, uh, discussion of, uh, sewer opportunities, I think I've mentioned to, I've mentioned publicly before, and I think I mentioned with this group, that one of the things that we are working toward over a twenty-year time horizon is expansion of the satellite treatment plant, uh, out here, uh, next to the port property, just south of the port property. We want to eventually get away from discharge to Oakland Bay because there are regulations and requirements for continued discharge to Oakland Bay are not going to get any easier. Uh, and, uh, I think even more important, we want to be able to help our shellfish growers and our tribal partners to continue to maintain their industry and their interest in that particular, um, that, on that particular focus. So we're really focused on, uh, transitioning all of our sewer to the satellite treatment plant, uh, over time. Uh, we are in the middle of a property purchase, uh, that will allow us to put in a, a large pump station to get basically the entire city, uh, pumped up to, uh, the satellite plant. But with that, we need, uh, some additional property and particularly some additional funding, because the membrane bioreactors is what we use, are, uh, very expensive pieces of equipment, and like anything, the cost of that will go down over time, but at the moment, we are focused on securing additional property. So we'll be talking with the port shortly about additional property next to the existing satellite treatment plant so that we can extend and replicate what we already have further. A big part of that is providing all the treatment capacity that's necessary for the industrial land here to develop. Um, there's, uh, the industrial land will produce living wage jobs for people in our community, uh, and, uh, uh, move forward with productive industrial infrastructure development in this corridor if we can get that capacity extended, which I think we will, we've been working on that pretty hard for quite a while, and, uh, it'll go along with the latecomers agreement that we were, uh, lucky enough to have a partnership with the state owners later on to get that, uh, get those requirements removed for the property adjacent to the, the current water line. Uh, reclaiming water is also a big deal, uh, and I think that also helps our tribal partners because we have to punish the aquifer, we increase the stream flows in the creeks that support salmon and the health of Oakland Bay. So that's kind of the direction the city's moving in, uh, it's not inexpensive by any means, and it's a very long timeframe, but I think overall, long-term for this community, it's the right way to go and the right way to do it. long-term for this community, it's the right way to go and the right way to do it.
I'm not familiar with the satellite facility. Do you, so do you land apply? Do you have the lagoon? How does that, and where's your land, your field?
The spray field is not too far from there. We would expand that, actually, I think it's right out here. And there would not be a way to do it because, as we all know, lagoons attract birds, and birds and plains don't necessarily mix. So, we would keep it away from the lagoon style, but it would all be land applied. We think that at least we've had indications that we'll receive a lot of support from the tribes in order to do this, because they're very supportive of it as well. And we want to help them reach their voice also with increased stream flows and those types of things. And we'll be submitting that to our state delegation at their send-off hopefully in January, if not April. And then we'll be working on that. It's one of our higher priorities, along with water storage capacity. It's another one of our priorities for continued growth in the city.
Injection wells and spray fields would eliminate putting any influence out in the bay, which could open up also closed areas for shellfish.
Eventually.
Eventually, yeah.
The thing that, the timing on that is incredibly important because not only the life cycle of the asset, the sewer treatment plant down in Oakland Bay, but also the debt that was incurred to do that. So, the timing of that transition is going to be incredibly important. We don't want to ask our community to pay for an asset that they're no longer using. So, that timing aspect is very important.
Any other questions on this topic? Well, seeing, and we kind of, this is a late one that we put on there, but I think I thought it was really appropriate to sit down and talk about. There's been some discussion about designated crisis responders, and I think that there's some information going out about the county and whether we support it or not. So, I brought Dave Wyndham to make sure that we're all clear. What does that look like? And maybe give just a general overview of what that resource would do? And then what is the city planning on doing, and how can the county help participate? So, Dave, you want to talk a little bit about?
So, DCRs, we're certainly supportive of DCR. One of the problems we have right now is that, in many ways, it's just one of them. Sure. Thurston County gets a cookie, we get the crumbs. And it happens with many things, and DCRs, it's the same thing. So, when we have DCR that comes out of Thurston County, and we say, hey, we have somebody who's just having a problem, they're on the sidewalk, and they're crying, and they're just completely irrational, and the DCR is already in Thurston County talking to somebody who wants to jump off a bridge, we're not going to get that service. So, our approach is to get somebody dedicated to Mason County, specifically around Shelton. And we've been doing some research this week, and we found it sounds like that asset would have to live at Oars, which is the Olympic Area Recovery Services. The purpose of a DCR is to make that evaluation of who needs involuntary commitment. And right now, when you have to wait hours, sometimes days, to get somebody over from Thurston County, crises go up, they come down, and then who deals with that person in the meantime? So, is it at the jail? Is it the sheriff's office sitting in the patrol car? Is it the city? Is it the hospital? You know, is it in a 23-hour bed at the hospital? So, we're looking to bring that resource here and have it available, you know. There is plenty of work for someone to be here working locally. I mean, all you have to do is drive around and talk to the local businesses, talk to the people on the street, talk to community lifeline. We definitely need that resource here in town, and it's time to bring that level of service to Mason County.
So, Jeff, the city actually, the city actually applied for some funding for that?
So, the Association of Washington Cities had a grant opportunity that they sent out, and I know several members of your team saw it, and they sure they brought it to our attention. In conjunction with that, as many of you are aware, we had a homelessness task force that convened over the summer. And one of the recommendations that came out of that task force was for a designated crisis responder, or a DCR. So, when the grant opportunity from AWC came out, we put together a request for that DCR. And really what it is, is a year-long program to gather data for long-term decision-making at the state legislative level to see if this is a program that is worth funding. So, our plan, should we be successful in that grant application, I should know before Thanksgiving or before the end of this month, whether we'll be successful or not, is to partner with Mason Health, who I've already reached out to, because the DCR has to be associated with a medical facility, so Mason Health, or Oars, or any of the others. And to provide that service here in our community, and it wouldn't just be limited to Shelton, we would certainly partner with the county for their needs as well, but that funding is only for a year, and just to see if that would be an effective use of resources to address the issues that we're seeing fairly frequently in our community. So, we'll find out if we're successful with that grant application, and then we'll go from there.
Is this a resource that could be coordinated with law enforcement?
It is. So, the alternative response team, it needs to be a team, and that's something that the chief and I talked about, is not necessarily in the police car, but certainly responding as a team to the crisis situation. And we'll see if it works. That was a recommendation from the homelessness task force, so we wanted to make sure.
I think it's extremely important that we have a DCR here in Shelton. I've been downtown where there's been somebody in crisis, and four hours later, when they show up, person's just sitting there, DCR leaves. Recently, a county employee hounded them, and somebody finally showed up and actually saw crisis happening, and that person that has been in crisis on and off for months was involuntary committed and probably will never come back. I mean, will probably be taken care of the rest of his life, so.
But it took much too long.
It took much too long for that to happen, and kudos for the county for staying on them on a daily basis, is what I hear.
Well, obviously, our crews are impacted constantly by this, our EMS crews. And the biggest challenge that we face besides the lack of infield DCR response is even once the decision has been made that this individual needs help, it's where do we go? And Mason General's ability to handle that is extremely limited. What ends up happening a lot of times is my EMS crews end up hospital shopping, and it can be, they could be calling all over the area, Thurston County, Kitsap County, and they're lucky, honestly, sometimes, to find a facility that will take this individual, generally for pre-medical clearance and then beyond. And so, does that grant have anything to do with housing of these individuals? The ones that, once they're medically cleared, but they need help, obviously?
Yeah, I think one of the things this grant is intended to do, and this wasn't the express stated purpose of it, is to expose where the cracks are. And that is where, what I've heard anecdotally, where the cracks are, when you can get a DCR, and they are lucky enough to time it in conjunction with someone that's actually in crisis at the moment and not doing this that David mentioned.
And I think the other piece to that is, it's not just a DCR. I think you need to have that in conjunction with a case manager, because I don't think the DCR's role, they should be doing the evaluation, but finding that facility, finding that place where the person would go next, that's really more along the lines of somebody else to do.
Yeah.
Because there's enough work for them to do just in the evaluation and making those determinations.
We've had talks with our medical program director, Dr. Joe Hoffman, and at the EMS council. This has been going on the last couple of years, is this problem continues to increase, where if we had an intake facility, we could write protocols where our EMS field providers could do medical clearance in the field, because currently, that's not something we can do. If a patient needs medical clearance of any type, it has to be done at an emergency facility. And so, hence, this problem just continues to perpetuate itself. Whereas if we could do that in the field, having a place that could take them, that would take the pressure off the hospital, and, you know, it would just be part of the overall care system for these individuals.
To that point, you know, your first responders end up having to stay with that person until you can find a suitable place for them. And if you're hospital shopping, and you have to go to other counties in order to find someone, that's somebody that's not responding to calls for service. And to piggyback on that, those same persons, your point is very well taken, that if a person's in crisis, and we simply get them out of crisis and put them back out there without any kind of resources, they ultimately end up back in crisis again, and it's this revolving door of the same folks utilizing services and taking up an inordinate amount of time trying to get them the help that they need, but it's not consistent help, so that cycle continues. And we see the same people over and over again, and it gets to a point sometimes that these people get to be so well-known in that crisis that even places that have those beds are like, oh, I'm not taking that person. But it's because we're doing a terrible job of helping people manage so they don't end up in crisis again.
It's hard on all the first responders, because when you have a person that you obviously know needs help, but they don't meet the medical criteria based on what the chief is saying, that the ER is going to accept them, and a DCR doesn't get involved, and there's no place to take them, where do we leave them? We leave them on the street. And we have no choice in that matter. And so, it's difficult, not only for the individual not getting the help, but it's hard on the first responders as human beings that have to make those decisions when their hands are just tied.
And then it's hard on the community that's dealing with that.
It is.
I mean, I've been under the impression that when a DCR does come, and somebody's in crisis, they do find somewhere for them to go.
Well, not always, no.
They try.
They try.
Sometimes it takes several days for them to try to find that resource, and in the meantime, if they're not in a facility where they're locked down, a lot of times, they just take off into the community, and the cycle starts over again.
And a lot of these folks end up in community lifeline, and then we can't, we don't have facilities there to take care of them medically or psychologically, and then they're back on the street. And then, so, we're frustrated, EMS is frustrated, law enforcement is frustrated, and it's the same people, right? So, there needs to be more than just, there needs to be another type of shelter that's not just homelessness, but maybe a respite, or someplace where they can chill out till they can find someplace for these people, folks to go, instead of just wandering the streets, or wandering the parks, or wandering, you know, the doorways of everyone's business. So, I think there, this is a huge problem than just getting a DCR. It's like, even if we have the DCR, where do these folks go? So, in the long term, and not just shuffling them from one hospital to another and then ending up on our door because that was their last known residence, you know? And they're literally dumped on the doorstep downtown, and that we can't even bring them inside because we don't have the capacity or the money to be a 24-hour shelter. So, this is a huge problem, just getting a DCR.
No, this is definitely a state issue. Even, there's a great article out, I believe it's Inslee's Fix to Western State, and they're going to create 500 beds, 500 more beds, but none of it helps us. It's basically through the courts, I mean, none of it helps involuntary commitment or voluntary commitment. So, it's a great article, this is Seattle Times article, it's from March.
One of the things that we did in Ponderay County to kind of stem the flow, it'd be nice to turn the tap down, was to put people at the hospital, to get people back out of the ER and back into clinical settings, where oftentimes, they've been fired, you know? They come into a clinical setting, they're difficult, the clinic fires them, now they're out, you know, they have no place else to go, so they overutilize the ER, or, you know, EMS takes them to the ER. So, one of the things that we did there was to have people at the hospital co-attach to the emergency room, to start working people out of the emergency system and into clinical care. And if you do that, it's cost-effective. It saves the hospital, I think we invested $160,000, and we saved the hospital $660,000 in the first year of unreimbursed charity care. So, there's, I think, like Miguel was saying, there's multiple things we need to put into place. It's not just dealing with the crisis now, having turned down the volume a little bit of people who are going into crisis, so.
One of the options just got closed over at St. Michael's, too, so we can't even go more with Mason-Kitsap right now, because they're having a huge issue with, they're calling 911, the ER is calling 911 to get help with their ER services. So, this is a huge, this is a huge problem that is not going, not being funded or being looked at appropriately. That's my opinion.
But all this being said, we, obviously, this is a huge problem at multiple levels. Absolutely, we could use DCR services here in Mason County.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
It's each piece.
Yeah.
Well, not a question. I'm trying to stay silent, because this really isn't my meeting, it's your meeting. But I urge you to think big. A designated crisis-receiving facility, since you're planning and that sort of thing, in Mason County would help all, fire, police, it would help everyone have, you know, three days, that 72-hour hold where they're in a therapeutic setting, they can start in. I hear you loud and clear. We have to scrap the system and rebuild the mental and substance abuse system from the ground up. I mean, we have to. But I think community-setting crisis-receiving facility is where all of us should start, and I encourage you all to think big. On this, if we don't, if we don't start making significant progress, I think the number is, for every one person we help in Washington State, 25 more people get into either a mental or substance abuse problem. Let's fix it in Mason County, do the Mason County way. We don't have to wait for the state. Ask for help. I'm going to work, all I can do to convince my colleagues in Olympia that we have to scrap the system and build a new one. But think big, really think big, because, you know, the people that need us the most are the ones that we're talking about here. Anyway, thank you. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate that. The telecare facility downtown was meant to be a Thurston, was pitched to be a Thurston, Mason County facility, and it's not. It's a statewide facility, and I understand that it's got quite a few people from out of the area in there.
But a designated crisis-receiving facility is totally different. These are people that are having a mental health break with reality, or a substance abuse break. They are the most challenging patients to deal with. It frees up law enforcement and fire to go out and help the next person. It also puts them in a therapeutic setting that is designed and trained and staffed to take care of it.
So, is that partnering with like an OHR?
It is. There are service providers out there. The state is looking and has freed up quite a bit of funds for the construction and the operation of such facilities. So, think big on that. Ask for it.
Dan, do we have a breakdown on costs?
Yeah, it's expensive. It's not, it's not cheap, but again, the one, I think we did it in Linwood, I don't remember. There's two facilities running in the state of Washington that are designated crisis-receiving facilities, and I will try to get you all some information.
So, I can maybe talk a little bit about that. So, over the summer, first off, I want to say, this is a super important conversation. This is another one, much like the jail, that it's going to require, it's going to require action. And, but we want to make sure that the action is targeted, and it's the right action. And so, I want to maybe just address the DCR term first. So, designated crisis responder, it sounds like those are all three things, those three words are something that we need. But a DCR is specifically called out in statute and has a specific role, and that is to get somebody involuntarily committed into the ITA process. And that's a civil commitment court process that they have to go through, and so, when we're talking about a designated crisis responder, we're using it like Kleenex and tissue. What we're really, I think, talking about is having a continuum of crisis care and response that pairs the right, the right level of credentialed person with the issue at hand. And so, we're looking at mobile outreach teams, most mobile crisis teams, perhaps that are embedded with law enforcement, not that, not that they ride in the car anymore, but that are, you know, that are working hand-in-hand, you know, with law enforcement, and are co-responding to those crisis issues, and are focused on, you know, they can have a DCR attached to them, that helps with the evaluation if somebody does meet the statutory requirement for involuntary commitment. But it's also providing that peer support, which is a drive from the state and healthcare authority, which, you know, peers are people who have certifications based on their lived experience that help individuals in crisis or substance use navigate the system. So, there's a case management component to it that's working on things like finding, you know, mental, not just mental health resources, but physical health and housing, and, you know, the whole, you know, continuum there. And so, that's, I think, you know, maybe just for some clarity on when we're talking about designated crisis responders, we're talking about a much bigger continuum of care versus this actually very specific function in state law. That said, you know, having a voluntary facility is something that we ought to be considering, and we have to balance that with, you know, how many people would we need to have in that facility? There're capped at 16 beds under federal law that you can have in a crisis response facility, and so, they And so maybe there's, you lack some economies of scale with that, so you have to keep those beds filled, you know, year-round in order for a private provider in order, you know, to make a pencil for them. And so one of the facilities I think Dan might be talking about is a facility in Spokane, which is a, which is a true drop and go law enforcement EMS voluntary facility. But what they've done is they've, they've blended their model in order to get, make a pencil for medical care and all the other elements that you need to run a facility like that, where they have a detox, they have 16 detox beds and 16 co-occurring substance use and mental health beds in order to, you know, kind of make that system work for them. You know, the challenge is we can get the capital funding. The legislature's done a lot of great work on providing capital funding, but it's finding a partner on the provider side who's willing to do a voluntary facility because of, because the reimbursement rates lack, are lagging for those beds. And then there's also just sort of this, just sort of the way the model is set up financially, it doesn't always work. And so we have to be looking at, like Dan said, I think, you know, do look big, look at how we're blending services in a facility like that so that it, so that it can be sustainable. I, I would also, I think for a future meeting like this, because this isn't something that we're going to solve here, I, I think it's absolutely critical that we have Olympic Health and Recovery Services, the Thurston Mason BH ASO present on the services that they are providing. I, I think we've come a long way from where we were under the regional service network model, which we're now on our third model and that is coming to place in the past decades from a regional service network that was solely under Thurston County and we were, you know, contracted with them to receive funding and services, to the behavioral health organization model, which, which gave the Thurston, then the Thurston Mason, the behavioral health organization $60 million of flexible funding to put into these gaps that, you know, was directed to Medicaid spending. And now we're under the BHA SO, the Administrative Service Organization model, where that has now been shifted to managed care organizations. So your Medicaid, your Medicaid providers, insurance providers manage the lion's share of those funding. And so the, our region went from having about $60 million in flexible funding down to about $10 million essentially overnight. And this has been a push of the legislature predates Dan, predates our delegation, it's been in the works for a number of years and a lot of other regions were early adopters and we held on to the very last minute to, to switch over because we wanted to make sure that we were having more of a say in how those funded, those funds were deployed in our communities. And so, yeah, we need to have a holistic approach. We also have to look at who's not at the table. And, you know, under the, under the model that we have, given to us by the state, the only place that provides designated crisis responder services is Olympic Health and Recovery Services through the Thurston Mason BH ASO. And so if, if we're going to talk about this, if we're going to build programming, let's look at the models that they have in place that are working in Thurston County and, and see what we can bring here. See what we can do to leverage our treatment sales tax, their Medicaid reimbursement abilities and, and build a program that, that would work. I don't think they were participation, they participated in the homeless task force where this recommendation came from. And so just sort of acknowledging that maybe there's a knowledge gap on some of this stuff, given how complex of an issue it is. I think we would all benefit from bringing them in to, to do a presentation to our council and commission.
So Kevin, the economy scale is, is something that's on, on the bottom of everything we do to be able to try and make it work. You mentioned the Spokane with the 16 beds in one and 16 beds in another modality. Does that allow them to have larger or are they considered the same thing just in a location that's got separate pods?
It's a, it's one facility, but the, where you get the benefit is you're sharing one medical team, which is a huge cost driver of it. And so when I don't have enough people in my crisis stabilization beds, maybe I'm pulling the detox side or the co-occurring side. And so I'm able to continue to pull in those funding resources to keep my, my staffing. And so that's, that's, that's that blended model. When, when we visited there from the BH ASO in August, we came back and talked about it at that board and we were evaluating what that might look like in, in our region, in particular in Mason County, because we were considering going for the funding that the legislature approved on the, on the capital side. Even though we didn't have a partner identified, we were considering going for the facility funding. Our, our conversations there and our sort of evaluation of it was that we would need to have between 1,100 and 1,500 people go through that facility every year in order for that to pencil for a provider. Part of it is we, we, we're not convinced that we have 1,500 people in our community that would be there for a three or five day stay voluntarily, enough to, to sort of keep that business model afloat. And so the concern then would be, okay, where are we pulling people who are coming into a voluntary facility? Where are they coming from if they're not, if we can't meet that 11 to 1,500 number in Mason County? And so certainly because we're in the region with Thurston County, they would bring, they would bring folks here, but you would also be having probably people from, from Kitsap and Grace Harbor because we have so few voluntary beds in our state. The lion's share is, is the involuntary commitment beds. And so, you know, having that, you know, that's a, that's a bigger community conversation. If we cited a facility here, what's our comfort level with, you know, bringing folks into this community who are in crisis, who could leave at any time and, and maybe not go back to the community in which they came from? We already are, you know, we already have to continue to talk with telecare and make sure that when folks are released from the involuntary treatment facility, that they're exhausting every effort to get them back to their home if they're not from here. So on a voluntary level, that problem just becomes even more critical to address. And so, you know, I, I think we just have to go into it eyes wide open as to what the, what the community's tolerance for, you know, that, that kind of a situation might be, even beyond funding it from a, from a capital or operations standpoint.
So I want to be respectful of everybody's time. I feel like Jeff and I have some homework to do where we can get together and coordinate some of these discussions. Essentially even set up a special meeting where the council and the commissioners can hear a presentation from BH OASO and services that they provide and maybe even some ideas for backwards there, because I, I definitely hear that as a, as a major meeting. I also feel very strongly, I've heard a consistent message about how do we handle jails in the future. So what are we going to do? And we need to kind of plan and we need to get started on it sooner rather than later. So that's something else that I can, that I can get together and start talking about. What are those next steps? I have a ton of information. I've got a pile of research and reports and maybe sitting down talking with the commissioners about Chief Adams' idea about, or leadership's idea about getting together a committee with the county and discuss some of that. So definitely interested in my commission getting, especially with what, does that look like and then if we could coordinate that with the city too, I think that would be, that would be super positive.
No, I think that you and I can get together in the next two or three weeks, maybe just after Thanksgiving, depending on how things play out. And kind of put some framework around these discussions and bring it back to our respective elected commissioners and see how we can look forward to some options.
I agree. Thank you all for participating. Sorry we had a little technical difficulty this morning and I wish you luck traveling out your car.
I just dried off.
Hopefully, yeah, you wish you luck.
Thank you, everybody.